And I want to just tell you, man, it's a Thursday night and people still have to go to work tomorrow. And thank you for taking your time to be here tonight. I think you're going to be so excited to see what has been developed here, not just over the last couple of days, but this has been a long process, right? So to help with all of this, we need to come into this time understanding that we are at the starting point. We're not at the finish line. This is just the beginning. And so you're getting to see tonight a rough draft. And, but it's a good rough draft. And there will be additional meetings. There'll be additional things that we'll do. And I think that when you see what this rough draft is, I think you're going to be excited about it. I also think you're going to have a boatload of questions. And let's let the questions be at the end. Let's let Dave just carry through his explanation. He's going to show you site plan, floor plan, all of those things. And then we're going to open it up for a period of questions where you can see the microphones that are set here. If you'll, when it's that question time, if you will come to the front and ask the questions in the microphone. We're recording this so that we can put it online. So I appreciate that. So without any further things from me, I want us to welcome Dave Tyson. He's with Building God's Way. We got introduced to Building God's Way in a seminar that they held last fall here in Boise. We were impressed by what we heard. And through a series of meetings, it has led us to this point where over the last couple of days, we've really put some work into what is possible. So could we give Dave just a warm welcome? And let you go, man.
That's it, huh? Everybody hear me okay? Cool. Well, thank you all for, as Pastor Jeff said, taking time out of your busy week. Your leadership team has, over the last few days, put in a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of thought, thinking. I'm sure for most of them, it's been late nights, hard times getting to sleep as they're thinking about different things that we've talked about. And I think that the result that we have is pretty exciting and something that we can all be proud of and excited about what God's doing in the Boise area. My name is David Tyson. As Pastor Jeff said, I'm an architect with BGW. BGW is a national architecture firm based out of Ogden, Utah. We specialize in evangelical Christian churches and schools across the United States. That's all we do for the last, we just hit 25 years this year. So it's an exciting time for us. We've done a little over 1,000 church designs, a smattering of another 170, 180 or so schools across that time and a bunch of different other ministry-related things that kind of get us excited to do what we do. That's what we do. That's what we're excited about. We're interested in stewardship design and in mission-based design. Our goal is to come into these processes and really hear the heart and the vision and the mission of the church and then fit that in in a building that takes into account stewardship and understands how we utilize these buildings, not just on Sundays, but how we continue to use them through the week and think about the ministries that can happen in the lives that are changed when we think through those spaces accurately and in a good way. What we've done over the last two to three days now is what BGW calls a charrette process. Now, some of you maybe have heard of that process before, others maybe not. A charrette process for BGW, the word charrette itself is just kind of a fancy French word that means little chariot. But for BGW, what it really means is it's a collaborative design effort that we go into. Collaborative in that we bring the church into the design. Many architects, when we do a design, we kind of, we go and we meet with the client that we're meeting with, we disappear for, you know, maybe a couple of weeks, a couple of months. We come back with a new design and it looks great, it looks cool. I, as an architect, am super excited about it. And to some extent, I'm attached to it. It's kind of like my little baby by that point. And so any changes that you make, I'm automatically saying, no, no. I've thought about this for the last month and I know exactly what it is. You've forgotten probably what we talked about in that first meeting. There's no doubt I've forgotten what we talked about in that first meeting. And so at that point, then, it becomes this situation of really me creating something that looks great on my website, but may or may not work with what you're hoping to achieve as a church. And so this charrette process brings folks from your leadership team into this design portion, this design process, and really allows quality interaction. There's a 24-hour process. We started on Tuesday night with what you see on the screen, right? And then we've ended at what I'll continue to show you as we move forward. But throughout that process, there's been iterative changes and discussion that have happened. And there's no emotional ties on my part because mostly I'm tired and I really don't care to argue, right? And let's just make the change. But secondarily, really what it's about is that it's about the ministry and making sure that it goes in the right direction that you guys would like and what God's called you to do as a local ministry. No two designs are alike. We've never made the same design twice. Every time we think we are, we end up making changes because God's called you to do something, even in this specific Boise area, that's different than the next church that's two blocks down the street, right? You're not the same ministry. You're not ministering to the same people. God's called you to do different things. And so that's the excitement that we really have is creating something different. So as we started this process, we've kind of boiled down a certain amount of goals, I think overarching things that are important to this process and to the design itself. So one, number one overarching this whole thing, I know you guys have gone down some different paths and explored different directions. Pastor Jeff has probably brought some of those to you along the way. The focus and the goal of this specific design is to utilize the existing site and really the buildings to the greatest extent that we can. So we're thinking about the site that we're on, the building that we're in, the parking lots that are surrounding, the land that you currently own. How can we utilize that and mix that in to match and mingle with the best ministry possibilities that we can create for Bridgepoint Church? The second piece is to create a multi-use facility. We all know that the costs of construction, if you haven't noticed, the cost of eggs are going up, right? So similarly, the cost of a two-by-four goes up as well, oddly enough, right? So costs of construction are going up. It's not any cheaper to build something than it was two or three years ago. And so what we have to think about is how can we multi-use the space? That may mean using a classroom for something else the next day or even sometimes using an auditorium for a gymnasium. That's the design that we're thinking about here is saying, can we get both of our, can we have our cake and eat it too, right? Can we use a gymnasium and an auditorium together to where we can begin to create new and better opportunities to outreach to the community, to bring the community into our space at different times during the week? So in that case, we have designed an auditorium for about 550 to 600 people. And that also offers the extended ministry opportunity of a gymnasium that we can then offer other opportunities for folks that may not, you know, some of you may even be in that situation several years ago, in a situation where there's no way you would have stepped foot in a church. But if someone invited you to a dodgeball tournament or to a basketball game or to something where your kids would go and use that space, you would be much more inclined to walk into that space. And so those are the kinds of things we're creating is spaces where we can say, hey, we can use this in another way to reach folks that maybe wouldn't walk in just for a Sunday morning service. And so those are the things we're thinking about. The next, the third piece would be kind of creating a child and family-focused. We all know that right now, to drop your kids off, it maybe is a little bit harder. If you've got kids, the leadership here at Bridgepoint is trying their best to make this transition and movement between buildings as great as, or as good as it can be. But there's better ways to do this. So can we create a better flow? Can we create a better feel? Can we create a better feeling of safety when someone that is new here is dropping their kids off and then having to walk around to another building, another entry? And so thinking about how that flow works. And that kind of leads into the final thing, which really is about flow. So a little bit of maybe church history as we think about this process. Historically, churches were designed and built around a linear concept. So if you think about the old brick Baptist church, let's talk about in Middle America. If anybody's from the Midwest, you would have seen a standard Baptist-type building. You'd walk into a Narthex, right? And the Narthex maybe was like a coat closet of sorts, right? It's a pretty small space. You'd walk in, you'd wipe your feet off if they're wet. You'd hang your coat up on the hanger on the right or the left. Then you'd walk into the auditorium. But when we think about linear design, what then happens is to get to the kids' space or the fellowship hall or offices or classrooms, you actually would walk through the sanctuary. There's a door on either side. You'd walk down two sets of stairs, one right, two lefts, another right, maybe a little bit more of a hallway, up, back up, a stairs, two rights, a left, another right, right? And then you're in the kids' space finally. And we've got, but then to kind of get back to the auditorium, you kind of have to retrace your steps. And so it's a very linear concept of going all the way to one spot, coming back, going all the way back to another spot, having to kind of retrace and become kind of a maze of sorts. Newer church design or contemporary church design has the concept of creating more of a hub-and-spoke concept where you have a central gathering space. And off of that, when I walk into that space, so as a guest, this works really well. I come into the parking lot, I'm automatically drawn to where the entry is. Here's the obvious entry, right? And then from there, I ought to be able to see, when I get into that gathering area, here's where I get coffee, here's where I drop my kids off. If I need to use the bathroom, there it is right there. Here's the offices, here's the auditorium. Whatever those pieces are that as a church, you're saying, these are crucial to our ministry. We want folks to understand how to get through this. And it's very disarming and it's very community-based, community-inclusive to create that central gathering space where everyone's kind of rubbing shoulders, connecting with other people. I would submit that in your current church, probably, there are folks that don't necessarily interact with others because you don't have kids. So what's the point of going on that same path to go pick your kids up after church? Or, you know, you do have kids, so you're going that way and you're not connecting with other folks that are going a different way than you. And so what we want to do is create a central space where everybody's kind of rubbing shoulders and interacting and connecting and we get this real sense of unity and community within that space. That place is what we call a third place, that gathering area. So the third place is kind of a secular term in that it's not your home, it's not your work, first and second places, but it's that third place that you go for community. So for a lot of you, that would be, you know, a coffee shop that you would find. Or maybe it's that local corner place that you meet someone to have community or to have a home group or those kind of spaces, right? Where we think about community and gathering and connecting. And that's what that central space ends up being. And so when we think about the design of that space, that's what we're thinking about. When we think about the flow and creating a great central gathering area, that's really what we think about. So as we jump into the plan, and again, as Jeff said, we're still really preliminary, but some of these things we think about are getting kind of the big overarching chunks in space. I often say it's getting the big spaces in the right places. We want to get the big chunks in those areas. And those are the things we're really starting to think about is the big overarching directions and such as that. What you're going to see is on the plan here, we actually have the site plan set up in the existing building. So we are currently in this central space, this auditorium. I think I'd probably be somewhere right about there, maybe. I don't know, something like that. And then you ate dinner down here, you had your pizza over there. And then the offices kind of up in this space, the children's wing, the education wing, up to the northwest. And so north is up on this plan. That's what it's always going to be as I walk you through this. So just kind of keep that in mind as you think about this kind of up and to the left L shape. And that's kind of how we're setting things up. So what we've done is, as we think about this, thinking about when we go into a parking lot, when we're drawn into this parking lot, into this space, how are we going to create a central gathering area that eliminates the least amount of buildings and gives us the best amount of space to move forward? And so what we've really begun to do then at that point is create a central gathering area that is on the corner of this L. So we're thinking about this, I'll walk you into the plan here in a minute, but also understand that here's this entry point and then coming into that gymnasium, gymatorium, auditorium-type space through here. And this is where currently, as you would see on the way out, there's the yellow house right there. The yellow house land is right here. So we're moving the yellow house. My apologies to anyone who's living in that. The gymnasium, auditorium space goes into that area. And then what we're really going to think about doing here as I go big picture is really creating our new kids' space, new remodeled children's space within the space that we're in now. So redoing walls, I know you're looking around going, how does that work? Redoing walls, doing some significant remodel, adjusting these kind of things, creating a playground that goes over here underneath part of the drive-through that you would go through, and then also a new playfield. This is a grass playfield that comes down here off of that playground. So really creating some nice outdoor-type spaces for activity. And then on the top side, coming back in once we're done and actually remodeling this into offices, some upstairs youth space that some of that's already there, but reworking some of that stuff. So that's kind of a big overarching concept is what we're thinking about is creating a central entry point, like I mentioned, that gathering area that everything radiates off of, putting our kids into this existing building, putting our offices back into this existing building, and then coming down and adding in that new auditorium in those kind of three simple ways. So let me swing you then to really quickly, again, to kind of preface you, this is your existing floor plan. This is not the new floor plan, right? So our existing floor plan, so again, we're right here in about this space. I'm sitting right here. You had your pizza down over here just a minute ago. North is still up on the plan, so I'm walking you into the existing floor plan. There's no text on this or whatever. We're actually going to take out the existing office. That's the part that's going to be demolished as a part of this. And then we're going to take a portion of the kids' wing off as well, the education wing, in order to allow us to get a nice flow from the gathering area into the auditorium space as we think about that. So when we think about these spaces, understand, and then up here would be the second floor to the youth spaces as we think about those spaces. And then let me walk you right into the floor plan as we think about that same orientation. So what we're really talking about here, again, overarching, is a large gathering area coming into this large gathering space. We have our gymatorium for about 588 seats, a kids' area, a kids' space, and then the offices. Let me zoom in now on our entry space, our entry gathering area, and I'll begin to kind of walk you through that. So our main entry comes off of the north parking lot, comes into this large gathering space, pretty good-sized. You can see on the left side of the plan over there says coffee. That's right beside a new kitchen that serves directly onto kind of a coffee bar-type area that sits on that side. There would be kind of a welcome booth in the central area that could be on wheels to move to different areas as we think about having a nice welcome booth for guests as they arrive. On the right side, then, what we have is about a thousand-square-foot classroom space that has movable walls, similar to what you've got currently. So it allows you to utilize this space as part of the gathering area or break it off for a large classroom. If you've got a class, a meeting right after the service, that would probably be a large gathering space for 50 to 100 people sitting there in that space. That's a good spot for that. So this gathering area, again, is that central space. From there, we can go right into the kids' space to the auditoriums. There's bathrooms on either side of the auditorium and then into the offices. And then the stairs, there's new stairs on the left side that take us upstairs to the youth as well as the elevator that's there. As we swing then into the auditorium, I'll pull you into that for a minute. We have a junior-size, junior-high-size court, basketball court that's laid out right there. And then on the backsides, there's actually risers that step up, that give us some additional seating. It also kind of helps us get a feel for this space and make it feel more like an auditorium. It's not just a gymnasium with flat seating all around, but we've got some seating stepped up in the back. We've got some wall shaping done a little bit differently just to give us a little better feel for that space. So 588 seats, there's about 450 on the floor and another about 100-ish on those risers, sound booth in the back. We've also created some, two doors in a row in a line there in order to give us kind of a sound lock so that as folks are gathering for the end of the first service, beginning to get ready for the second, or if folks haven't left before the second service, there's no issue with sound in between those two spaces, creating that space right over here. The stage itself also is set up in a way where we have this dash line coming kind of across here, if you can kind of see that, begins to show a screen that would drop down or maybe a fabric-type thing that would come down, a net that would come down to allow you to still play active things, right? You could still have the dodgeball in this space and not worry about necessarily removing everything off the stage. You've got kind of a protective cover of that so that we can still utilize that in a real quick way and keep things set up and adjusted in that way. On the right side, we've got a ramp that brings you up to the stage. On the left side or stage left here is our green room space that allows worship team and speakers to prepare and get ready to come onto the stage. Also on the right side here, we've got some storage backstage-type areas. And we'll kind of come back to the other side in just a minute. But that kind of gives you an overview of that sanctuary space. I'll swing you in and back over here now as we think about the entire space, zooming in again on our entry to the kids' space. Within this kids' space, so again, kind of some secure doors as we enter into that kids' area, coming in then to the play area and the check-in zone. So what we've done is we've created kind of an extension to that gathering area. So still space for parents and kids to gather. But when I think about this kind of space that's created in this area, it begins to feel like, like if you go to the mall and they have kind of those low play areas, those kind of mounds and things, parents can kind of sit around the edge and the kids can kind of run around and play and it's soft play. It's not some large indoor McDonald's playland, but it's an area where you can really kind of let the kids run around, where you're talking to other parents. It gives you kind of, again, that extension to an area that you can feel safe. You don't have to be constantly wondering where your kids are because they're in there running around and playing. But it gives you an opportunity to create some gathering space where kids can play indoors. Check-in wall kind of along this, so this is where your computers and your check-in zone would be. You check your child in, walk them down the hallways. In the central area, we've got a large group kids' space. And then on the right side, we have three classrooms, infant and kind of our two toddler preschool-age-type rooms. There's a bathroom between those sinks in all those rooms. Large group kids and then three or four breakout or added classrooms for when the kids break out into their smaller, small-group-type classrooms. We've left the bathrooms and the existing kitchen for children's use. Those are still all right there in that space as is. Also in between, we've added some kids' storage and kids' resource rooms, which we did a quick presentation to the kids' staff before they headed out. And I think those are the two classrooms that they, or the two spaces they were the most excited about. As we kind of swing back then, so we zoom back up to the third place and then we cross over to the other side. And now we're actually within the existing children's wing, the existing education wing. So on the other side, this building, right? And we've taken out a couple of classrooms like we talked about, but then we've come back in and we've created a kitchen pantry and then kind of a flexible use. This would be kind of like a living room-type setting where maybe you would have a home group or maybe you'd have a counseling-type meeting or, you know, any type of kind of medium-sized meeting might happen in there with 10 to 15 folks could meet within that room. As we further go down the hall, the restrooms still remain. And then we've actually taken what's currently, if you're used to walking into kind of the preschool room on this far-left side, really what we've done in that case is opened that up and added some offices, some open office space in the middle, little streaming studio-type space for doing video recordings. Couple other offices, our entry, this is our current entry, right? There's currently double doors right there that you might drop your kids off, go in there. But instead, we've kind of opened that up a little bit. Now it's our office entry. So during the week, you've got that right at the front. As folks come onto the site, you're able to quickly find where that office is. Walk in, there's good visual control of that. As we swing down then around, this becomes kind of our side backstage access to the offices. As a part of that green room, we have some restrooms that come off of that, kind of a prayer room, another kind of open living room-type setup area that we can use for various uses, multi-use-type capabilities of that. And then as we swing up to the second floor, you'll note that currently, this is a little different than what you currently have. Currently, there's three or four classrooms marching along this and then kind of one big auditorium. What we've done instead is kind of re-remodeled this, or remodeled this, I guess, to match what your current kind of ministry scheme is. The current ministry sets up where you have junior high in one night, high school on another night, right? And so the concept remains where we create one space that the junior high can use on one night and the high school can come in on another night and use that same space. So creating kind of a gathering area, again, this is walking up to the second floor. We're in this kind of youth gathering area. There's kind of a central café-bar area in the middle there, some smaller breakout rooms that kind of give you more, smaller settings that are conducive for those smaller breakouts. And then walking all the way across to the existing auditorium and really just leaving that as kind of that learning, teaching, worship zone for what it can be used for in that large space at the end. So just redirecting and redoing this space in a way that really gives us the opportunity to utilize it to its best of it, to the best of our abilities for what we're doing currently. So let me go back then really quickly to the master plan as you see this. So now you've seen this, you're able to see, kind of reconnect you with kind of how that works. Our entry coming off of the parking, you saw the entry coming into that point. Playground, playfield, kind of our grass field area to the bottom-right area. And then where the yellow house is, this is where we're putting that auditorium, that gymatorium space in that area. Does everybody's following along with that? Our entry comes in and our offices are over here. And then let me go ahead and also kind of bring up at this point the exterior component to this building, what we're really thinking about doing. Let me pan out real quick. So again, our existing auditorium, our children's education, the connection that we're thinking about happens within this space and our new auditorium comes down here. Let me kind of zoom down in on this to give you a feel of kind of what this looks like as we approach the street from the street view, coming from the south approaching. So right now, the yellow house might be within this range here, but we've covered, we've removed that and brought in this nice big, almost like a billboard as you're coming north, right? Creating a real presence on that and allowing folks to know that there is a church here. It's not just an apartment building or an office building as we drive by. We put a cross on the edge here. We're starting to, what we're starting to really do is use some different angles, some different materials to create some different interests, to kind of bring a little bit of a contemporary feel. And then similarly, as we're coming from the north, heading south, creating some new entry points, creating some interest, some draw back into the site. Say, here's what's behind, look, there's something else deeper into this site, inviting folks in through this space. Again, using some different angles, some different roof lines to kind of break up that larger building mass that you kind of have now, that gray kind of foreboding mass and creating some lower areas within this. This then becomes our entry point, right? This is our welcome entry point. The kids' education wing happens down towards this further end, but that's our welcome entry. Lots of glass giving us a transparent view into that space, some real nice natural light moving into that space as well. And then as we kind of pan out, then you can kind of see how we've utilized the playground around the corner into that space, leaving the drive-through in place, that's a good shade area, you know, for kids to play under and stuff still. So we're still utilizing that space in that way. So let me kind of pan back through all of these images real quick. I'll slowly kind of go through each one of them and let you kind of digest a little bit more again. And then I'll take you back to the floor plan. And then kind of at this point, I think this is a really good time, one, to invite Pastor Jeff back up, and then, second, to allow you all to kind of... you all to kind of maybe bring some clarifying questions. And I know sometimes we can be care, we want to be careful not to get too far down into the weeds. Again, we're pretty new into this, we're pretty early on. But I also want you all to understand pretty clearly what, what is happening here. So as we think about the floor plan, I want to bring that up and allow you guys the opportunity to really ask any clarifying questions or things that you're confused about or, you know, how does this work? I'm not sure how that worked exactly. And let me kind of dive further into that in some form maybe. Or to ask Pastor Jeff, why the heck he brought BGW up here? Because it's a terrible design.
I've wondered that myself. So if you do have a question, if you could come to the microphone so that everybody will be able to hear and then also on our, on our online, people would be able to hear those questions as well. So, perfect, great.
Three important aspects of the church, I think, and functions of the church is baptism. And I see that you're off of the altar area in the sanctuary here, you're having two bathrooms and a space to go on to the altar or the stage. Is that functioning for the baptisms?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. So what the plan is, is still to, most churches, by the way, in today's culture, utilize a portable baptistry. I know you guys do the same. I would say, most of the designs that I do, somewhere around 75-plus percent utilize a portable baptistry, regardless of whether they have the place, the space, whatever, to actually do that. There's some benefit to maybe adjusting it or putting it in a different location and stuff. And so what I've suggested at this point, in order to allow real easy access, is to put maybe a portable baptistry over here in the corner. You'd obviously videotape that. And then you also have direct access back to these bathrooms, which would be bathrooms used as well for the green room, the folks that are, but they're also changing rooms as a part of that. Now, whether you decide to put that there or on another side or have different access is completely up to the church when it comes to that point. But, but giving you kind of that flexibility and then the access directly to kind of backstage bathrooms for changing rooms, I think, is, is the benefit that we're really thinking about there.
My second function is weddings. And I was wondering if there's any word there that there's like a room where the body can get ready?
Yeah, so there's a few different ways that you can look at that. So, so the first thing is, is that I would say within a space like that, you're going to have very few weddings. Most churches aren't doing a lot of weddings, especially in a larger auditorium like that. So you might actually be thinking about more about spaces that you would be able to utilize for, for receptions and such, which I think this large gathering area would be extremely well-used for that, having a ton of light. It also might be the gymnasium. On the off, on the odd chance that there is, obviously you can adjust the chairs to have a center aisle. We've got multi-use chairs, so you split that and use that space. There's also different spaces, bathrooms and, you know, some of these other spaces in the kids' areas that are a lot of times used for like bride rooms and stuff like that in most designs. So I don't have a specific bride room, but I think there's a lot of different areas with bathrooms attached to them, classrooms and different things that could be utilized for that.
I think that's a really, really special day for couples.
Sure.
I didn't want to put my wedding dress on in the bathroom, but it's just a thought.
Sure.
The other thing is funerals. And I know that when you have a funeral in a sanctuary, it's nice to have access. You went to the back to have a drive-through, the nurse to come in and so the family can, it just runs smoothly. And I just wondered if you take any aspects that you would, you have funerals here and how that functions with your doors, access to the outside and driveways and that type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, you're definitely going to bring, bring them out through this main entry, through the lobby spaces, how that would, that would transition through there. And double doors through that whole space that can open up easily.
Well, good, great, good. Thank you. Who else?
Look, I'm going to say, I am impressed. Because I did not think you would ever look at how our layout is put together and recommend anything. Bring a bulldozer in and start. So I am impressed. It does not look scabbed together. It does not look, you know, like it's built by hillbillies. You've really done a good job.
Wait, what are you saying?
I'm impressed. I just, just with the understanding of some of what we had to do. I compliment you. One of my questions is, is that as, as you can see, we built our buildings and our facilities based on certain ministry requirements 15, 20 years ago. And as sort of the nature of what we're doing as a ministry has changed, we've kind of had to try and shoehorn in some fixed walls, some fixed spaces and all that. How have you got this designed to kind of future-proof against some, you know, being able to modify things or being able to be a little more adaptable to some of what, you know, you know, we might go away from big spaces to wanting smaller spaces or we want to make, they want to take away more of the smaller spaces and make big spaces.
Sure.
So how does that kind of fit in? I realize you've got to have walls. You're not getting away from that. But how do you kind of see that fit in here?
Yeah, so generally, the way that we look at a lot of our buildings at BGW is creating as much as possible long span or no interior bearing walls, right? Now, within a space like this, within the existing space, you're obviously, you've already got a couple of interior bearing walls that we want to try and follow as best we can. But by and large, even in this space, you've got a pretty wide open, pretty long span. And so when we think about turning this space into kids' spaces, a lot of those are non-bearing walls that we're putting up. So pretty easily, you can adjust and rework some of those. And as we move through this process, you might even see that we make a few changes and say, well, maybe we adjust this hallway so it allows us to split these two rooms into one if we need to do that in the future. Same thing in the gym, gymatorium, right? That's a big, wide-open span. We're not intentionally not creating bearing walls. Obviously, you can't across that. Wouldn't really work for the gymnasium. But it gives you a pretty wide-open space. Gathering area, same thing. So as you think about the actual structure of this, which we really haven't dug too far into, but intentionally BGW along the way will be making sure that we try and, I guess, future-proof as best we can. We can't, we can't target, just like when we built these buildings 30 years ago or whatever it was, right? We couldn't predict that this is how church is going to be done, or this is how kids' ministry is going to be done. But we can give our best effort to say, let's leave, let's leave extra paths or ways out to get out of these different things differently. I, I do think that when it comes to the actual layout and the flow, I think those are things that internally are going to be a part of our design for churches for a pretty long period of time, is creating that central gathering area, spaces for community to happen. That's something I don't see necessarily going away. I think if anything, COVID kind of reinforced that, that we need community, right? And so creating those spaces.
Thank you for your answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd say one of the things that you do is you just have to embed in the plan things that aren't easily changed. So you don't have five-foot-wide hallways. You know, you've got eight-foot or 10-foot wide hallways.
Yeah, exactly.
You don't have eight-foot ceilings in a lobby, which we currently have. You just do those things when you have the opportunity to do them. And then that gives you the flexibility to make changes if you need to, because the bones are good.
That's right. Exactly. Yep.
Again, just back to what Jason said, very, very good use of the existing buildings. I was feeling impressed and did not, like you said, not bulldozing. Question I had, maybe go back to the overall site plan, but I didn't, it looked like the modulars and all those houses over there were kind of grayed out in the plan. I was just kind of curious if you could speak to that, if I would just kind of disappeared.
Yeah, so generally, one of the thought processes we had in here was, let's see what, what we really need and maybe to some extent, what we don't need. Can we, how much can we do on just these pieces of property? And so it's not that we have completely removed those, it's just that we haven't utilized that space if it's needed yet. Now, what I will say is I think, right now, you're utilizing them, you know, maybe the modulars through the week or maybe for meetings here and there and you're not, you're trying intentionally not to split, spread your campus all the way out, especially on a Sunday morning. I think when we get into, and somebody may bring this up at some point, so I'll just address it, when we get into the actual construction, our goal is to try, and I think any construction company, as they come in to do this, the goal is to keep you all having church as much as possible on Sunday mornings. So to do that, it's kind of a phased approach. And that brings in those modular buildings at that point. Because I think those spaces are utilized then for different things. There may be a time where we say, hey, we've got to have a couple of kids' classrooms in that for a few Sundays. Or we've got to figure out how to utilize that for whatever offices or those kind of things, right? So we, we kind of use those as tools. And then when the construction's all the way done, if we say, we don't need those anymore, or maybe that's an opportunity to sell that off to somebody that wants, is wants to do something, whatever those kind of pieces end up being, we kind of are leaving our options open. I'm not saying that you have to do one way or the other. It's not my advice to do one way or the other, but I think you've got quite a few options for what you might do with some of that property down there as we start thinking about it.
It does represent a significant asset that can apply toward, at the appropriate time, it can apply towards the cost of this construction.
Hello? Yeah, well done with the incorporating the existing buildings. My question is, in the strategy for building while we live here and whether that saves enough money to keep these buildings to make up for the interruption of building, of that building process and us needing a home to meet it.
Yeah, I think it does. And I think as a church, that's something that, you know, once we get into the actual understanding of working with contractors, understand how long it's going to take to build, what the, what the pinch ends up being for the church, right? And then weighing that against, you know, displacing the church and going to another building while it's getting built or, you know, renting from a school or another church or whatever the, you know, that pinch would be, right? So there, there's kind of both sides that, that as we move through this, there's definitely going to be analysis that happens and says, okay, here's, here's our construction timeline and, you know, it's 15 months or it's two years. I don't know, whatever, whatever that ends up being, you know, as we work through this, right? And so then, then at that point, we say, okay, and then a portion of this time, you know, kids' ministry is going to have to kind of figure things out differently. Or the auditorium, we're figuring things out differently. I think there's, there's plans where we can kind of keep you meeting here every Sunday and it, and it makes sense to do that because you're able to see the excitement that's happening in the construction. You're able to come in and be a part of that throughout the week or come minister to the construction workers as they come on the job site and really get excited as the progress happens each week or show your kids, hey, look what happened last week. Your classroom was built, you know, and this is a space. You don't get to, you know, necessarily walk through as they're building. That's a construction site. But there are steps that I think can happen. And so at that point, then, you weigh those things versus going off-site to another piece. And I'm not saying that you have to do one or the other, but I think it's, it's a healthy weighing of those options as you go through that and the costs that are associated with that. And are those costs worth, you know, the extra time that it takes to build, you know, because you're phasing it through versus we're leaving for a year and it's done after that. I don't know, you know, whatever those things, whatever those things are. So, so it's, it's, it's kind of a weighing of those options when we think about, when we think about how we're doing the phasing of that. Does that make sense? Did that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
I guess nobody else is waiting on the microphone, so I'll take another shot.
Sure.
My wife plays for worship and I like to eat. And I noticed you have three kitchens and a wet bar incorporated. Well, but the bar, anyway. I assume it's going to have water.
Coffee. Coffee.
You call it a bar, it's a bar. It just means a place to serve.
Yeah, yeah. Water.
In any case.
Coffee.
Is that, are one of those kitchens industrial, one or more of them industrial?
Yeah, I think that central kitchen that was off of the lobby space is probably your main kitchen. And, and I, I think there's only two kitchens now. So there's, there's one that would be for the kids in the back area that would maybe be used for prepping snacks, pantry. It's the existing one, yeah. And it's a pretty small kitchen, right? I mean, there's not a lot that can really be done in there without it getting pretty tight quickly. But this other one is two to three times that size, right? And so it's significantly larger. And within that, there, there will be some discussion of, you know, how far do you go? What do you do? Because there's a lot of code restrictions that begin to create some significant costs and added. And so there's probably some, some deeper discussions. But I think, and what I would typically propose for most churches like your size, is that you at the very least, make sure you stub in to make it a full, full-service type kitchen. And maybe along the way, you add some of those different features as you're able to financially take care of them and add that in, whatever that looks like, right? But, but we think slowly in a phased approach and at least leave ourselves the options to actually get that to happen, make that happen.
Anybody else?
Please. Please. Somebody.
So two things. One, what should experience with having a flex space be a gym and auditorium as far as the sound requirements for an auditorium versus a gym and also moving the seats every week or what? How does that really work?
Yeah, so there, there'd probably be two answers to that. One, we have done it before. And, and what you have to determine ahead of time in some form is, what do we want it to look like more? Do we want it to look like a gym or an auditorium? Because we can make it look both and you sacrifice on the opposite side. And, and I think the responses come that we want it to look like an auditorium, but be able to still use it as a gymnasium. And so that's the direction we've gone. And we've done a few of these. You do have to spend some time and a little bit of cost on acoustics. Now, on the benefit side, right? The benefit is, is that we don't have to build two 10,000-square-foot buildings.
Right.
Right? And, and so that, that's huge. Not just for cost, but where exactly are we putting another 10,000-square-foot building on the site? And so that's kind of the thought process that I go with is, again, the concept of a multi-use gives us the ability to utilize this on a day-in, day-out basis. Now, it does mean that you have to move chairs. And so we've created storage rooms that are hopefully really close so we don't have to just take the chairs and then run them down a hallway, two lefts and a right, down a set of stairs to a classroom, right? But, but really giving us the opportunity to utilize that and make that work. There, there may be additional staffing or additional things that we've got to work through to make that happen.
New facilities.
Yeah. New opportunities for volunteers.
So then we talked about the south end of the property, the two houses and the toilets. What about the north end? It doesn't, also did not occur to be in the plan?
We, we added parking to that.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't pan up to that part. Yeah. We added about another 100 stalls to that north lot. Yeah, in order to gain, so typically, when we think about parking requirements, the city's parking requirements are not nearly what you would need to actually do. The standard parking requirements that we would have is about one stall for every two to two and a half seats in the sanctuary. So around, around 580 to 600 seats. And so we want to be pretty close to obviously 250 to 300 parking stalls. And we've got 278 shown on the plan right now. So we're right in that pretty good sweet spot area.
We currently have 190 parking spots is what we have. So.
Go for it.
Is that little area with four spots and like a?
Yeah, it's inexisting. It's already there, actually. And so we left that there. That's the kind of parking-ish area for the yellow house currently. And what we did is extended kind of a little extension there for a drop-off, a loading dock or loading zone area for the backstage.
What would we use that for?
You know, bringing different equipment onto the stage, dropping that off. You don't have to bring it all the way through the, the gathering area and through the, and you can bring it right into the backstage loading area. That's mainly what it's for. You're bringing different set pieces on or musical instruments or things that the, the worship team maybe would even utilize some of that every Sunday morning when they're bringing things on. They don't have to bring it all the way through, just drop it off right there.
Okay. And then, am I seeing things or is the corner of the proposed 70,000 square feet closest to Broadway? Is that not as close as the existing remodeled?
It's not as close. It's just slightly set back from it. Yep.
Is it? So thinking about the gym and the fact that the... Is it, so thinking about the gym, and the fact that the, you call it a junior-sized gym? The fact that the three-point line almost comes to the edge? If we moved that three more feet, there's eighteen inches on each side, would that be within the realm of design and city preferences and all of those things?
Possibly. Yeah.
Okay, good, Mike, thanks. Okay. Anybody else?
So, this is a very self-serving question. I run sound.
Yep.
And I just want you to allay my fears with the word gym.
Acoustic treatments, I'll respond with two words instead of one.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you, you really are, so what you think about, when you think about a gym, a lot of times, the acoustics can be a real struggle. And the main reason is because there's parallel walls all through it. And so one of the biggest things we look at, obviously, is how we do the wall shaping. We do still have quite a few parallel walls. And so even on that point, what we start doing is thinking about, how do we treat the back wall in order to alleviate the sound? There's also, a lot of times, line array speakers actually direct the sound towards the audience. The issue a lot of times, especially in the past with gymatoriums, is the old speakers that would stand and sit on the side of the stage. And they actually wouldn't be directed at the audience, they'd be directed at the back wall. And so you're not actually sending sound to the place where it matters, you're just bouncing it off the back wall and starting that reverb effect. And so that's generally what we're thinking about, is how can we acoustically treat those spaces? And it's definitely possible, I mean, within rectangular spaces, you can definitely do that. There probably is some cost to it. Again, it's less cost than building two completely separate spaces.
So Tree City Church has this model, if you've ever been in Tree City Church on Eagle Road. And they've done a fantastic job, the sound is great, because they've taken the time to do all the acoustic treatments. So one of the highest values that we have is that in any of these spaces, if people can't hear, or if people can't see, we're wasting our time. So that we have to make sure people can see, people can hear. And, and so, high value to make that happen.
And you should go check out that, the Tree City Church, just not Sunday mornings.
Where's Jason? Oh, he's just, oh, okay. Anything else?
So, my question, I don't know if you know this yet, but is there a rough estimate of when this would start? Or, like, is this like six months down the road, and just obviously cost? I mean, are we, I know churches want to be in as little debt as possible, or we like go all in and we'll figure out the money, or stages as money comes in? Do you know that for you?
Well, I think because we're at the very beginning of all that, of this process, that's a question to be answered, you know? I think that part of the process is that once we get the final rough, do I call it rough draft?
Sure.
I mean, it's not, it's not building plans.
The final preliminary design, we'll call it.
Ah, that's a great way to put it. And the final preliminary design. The FPD. Then we can submit that to a contractor that Building God's Way partners with, and they'll give us a detailed cost estimate. Now, it's not, I mean, it's helpful and it's not. We at least have a ballpark idea, but it's not building plans, and we are not building in 30 days. So prices can change. But here's what I would say. By the time we receive all the money from our sale of property, that type of thing, we'll be, we'll have approximately $2.4 million in the bank. And when I look at this, I think this is absolutely, with the Lord's help, this is doable. This is not a $15 million building. This is not, you've got to borrow 10 million, like we would do that. But you're not going to borrow 10 million to make this happen. So, I could see this happening in three to five years, if not sooner. So, it's within the realm in terms of time, and I believe it's in the realm in terms of finances. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to take one more. Okay?
Yes, I noticed, how many trees do we, and shrubbery do we need to keep? There's some pretty messy trees out here that have, require a lot of maintenance and clean them. And I'm just wondering what that ground can, you know, how that's going to enter into meeting the city's requirements?
Sure.
For vegetation.
Yep.
The next concern is runoff management, coming off of the paved lots? What kind of pond, pondy depression area are you going to use?
Well, I can, I can answer, I think, both of those. One, there is going to be some significant remodel on the exterior and landscaping, those type of things as well. Some of these big trees are going to be taken out. Two, part of what has to happen is that, as you know, this parking lot has needed attention for how many years? A lot of years. And the reason why we haven't spent tens of thousands of dollars on it is because we don't have, we didn't have this yet. And you can't put $200,000 in a parking lot, resurface, or, or, you know, redo it, and then two years later, you tear it all up. So part of all of this will be a redo of the parking. And I don't know what all that means, the city will let us know what that means in terms of, are we going to tie into the sewer? Can we continue to use a French drain, those type of things? So.
As I wander across and avoid the potholes and all, what would it concern about?
That pond out there in the parking lot is one of my favorite fishing holes. So, I hate to lose it.
We want to keep you happy and keep you heard.
Well, if you have any additional questions, you know, we'll be here, you know, after we're dismissed. But let me just. You? Yeah. I think that part of this process for us is that we just didn't know how to move forward. We didn't know, we didn't conceive the idea of, from that wall right there, that way, you knock all the building down. We just lived in the, you know, all or nothing. Got to knock it all down, we didn't think about knocking part of it down, which makes a lot of sense. So I want to thank you for bringing that expertise into that. But here's what I would say as well. We've been through a lot. And we've been through a lot of, you know, planning, and were we going to sell and move and all that kind of stuff? And we've just all come to the conclusion that this is where God wants us to be, right here on 2530 Broadway. When those decisions are made, then there are dominos to those decisions. We know what we've been, we, we know that this is, this has been, this is a great church. But I want you to think about just for a moment, what could we be in the future? What could we be if we had a facility that's just a tool? The church is not a building, it's, it's us. But if we had a tool that you could use to help draw the community in, whether it's basketball, because now we have a gymnasium, which there's nothing like this in Southeast Boise. Is it how we minister to kids? Whatever it may be, those are entry points for people to come to church that may not come to church, but they come to church because they see something of value for their kids or their family. And then once they cross that threshold, will we have then some opportunity to be able to present the gospel to them? The end result of all this is to make not only an impact on Southeast Boise, but to make an impact in the Treasure Valley, and to make a greater impact all around the world. Here's, here's what my hope is. My hope is for you who've been at this meeting tonight, that in the future, is it two years from now, is it three years from now, is it five years from now? I, I'm not sure about that. But my, well, my hope is, is that you're going to stand in this lobby, and you're going to look around, and you're going to go, I cannot believe what God has done. I can't believe that this is where we've come, and I remember when. I remember when we ate Costco pizza together. I remember when Mike McGowsky came up to the microphone. I remember when this was the night things started. And I can't tell you how excited I am about it. I can't tell you how thrilled I am. I can't tell you how this is the culmination, not just of my dreams, but I'm looking around, and there are people in this room. You were here when this was built. You were here when it was volunteer labor who built all of this building. It was not only the sacrifice of money, it was the sacrifice of blood, sweat, and tears, and time, and how many Saturdays were given to this church to build this. And here we sit, some forty years later, and we are eternally grateful for the lives that have been changed, the people that have been saved, people have been discipled within this facility. And we look back to people that made those sacrifices some forty years ago, and here we sit, beneficiaries of what they did forty years ago. Here's what I want for us. The decisions that we're making today about all of this, look, it's not going to be the same. We're not going to be laying block, volunteer labor, we live in a different time. But it's going to take an equal sacrifice. And what I want us to do, what we're talking about, we're talking about legacy, we're talking about generational impact. And what I would pray, if the Lord does not come back, that in forty years from now, perhaps after many of us are long and gone, there would be a group of people that would be sitting in the facilities that we sacrificed and we built, and say, I am so thankful because my family was saved in this building. I came to know the Lord as a result of having a place to go. And that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about just this generational impact. And so, what's our next step? Well, our next step is what our step has always been. Prayer leads planning. And so this is what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you to continue to pray, we've been in prayer about this for years, but to continue to pray. While we are praying, we're going to continue to develop this plan. We're going to have some availability that you will have and other congregation members will have to look at these plans and have input. But there is, when all this preliminary planning is done, okay, then we're going to talk about how. How are we going to do this? What, how, how will we make this happen? In all of that, we just, we just pray. And we're just thankful to the Lord for, not only what he has done, we're thankful to the Lord in advance for what he will do. So thank you for taking your time, thank you for being a part of this. I hope that, you know, this is just the starting point of what God is going to continue to do here at Bridgepoint Church. So here's how I, I want to, I want to close this. I just think for the person who's next to you, or, and maybe it's the person, you know, in the row behind you or in front of you, whatever, but could we just gather as little, small prayer groups, and could we spend the next few minutes just praying together? And asking for God's wisdom, asking for God's direction, asking for God's provision, to be able to do what he's called us to do? And then after, just, you know, a little bit of time for that, I'm just going to ask Adam to, you know, come to a microphone, and he will close this in prayer. So can we do that? Let's gather together and let's pray together.